Given that it's six o'clock, wow, we've got some, this is concert level, so I appreciate that. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the school board on Monday, May 12th, 2025, at 6:01 PM. Ms. Marsen, can you please take the role?
Yes, Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Piergree?
Here.
Mr. Kuescher?
Here.
Mr. Lentz is absent tonight. Mrs. McCabe?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
For the last time, here.
And Mr. Lackner?
Here. Can we please stand for the pledge? My pledge of allegiance to the Thank you. That brings us to item two, board member recognition. And for those new board members and folks in the community, one of the burdens of the board presidency is to speak on behalf of the board. So tonight, I'm going to take the moment to say thank you to our outgoing board members, whose board service has come to a close. One of the hallmarks of a well-functioning community is really the willingness of citizens to devote themselves to serving their fellow citizens. In the past, we've called this civic duty. Volunteering to serve on the school board is a real expression of that civic duty. And board members volunteer many hours, from regular board meetings to three separate standing committee meetings, to various district events. They give a lot of their personal time outside of the meetings as well. Community members speak a lot about D-303 and how it's one of the magnets that brings people into this community and keeps them here. D-303 is certainly a source of community pride. It's also a substantial burden on those civic-minded folks who are willing to carry that burden. There are about 1,200 employees, 17 buildings, 12,000 students, and a tax levy that brings in over 200 million of the community's money every single year on behalf of the community. That makes the board and the board members a real interest for many of the community members and a real annoyance for some, especially during levy time. But board members, like Mr. McNally and Mr. Lentz, knowingly volunteer to take on that burden of contributing. They do so with a pledge of fidelity and diligence, which means that they're going to be truthful and hardworking all the time. And you know, members of this board sometimes disagree on what's best for students or best for the community. Anyone who watches this board a lot knows that that sometimes shows up as passionate discussion. But one of the things that is certain about this board and its composition and these board members is that we can come to a resolution with civility and respect. And that's a hallmark of the fact that board members like Mr. McNally and the rest of the board agree in the importance of D-303 and the students that this district serves. So, the departing board members have certainly lived up to their commitments to fidelity and diligence on behalf of the community. They've contributed to a positive, well-functioning board for the last several years. I'm going to say a couple words about each of those board members. Mr. Lentz, who's absent tonight, has spent two years of his time serving the board. He's served as board vice president. He's been the committee chair for business services. In the past year, he led the board's effort to review every single line item of each department's budget to help ensure that every dime of the community's investment in this district was well-spent. He's been a consistent and strong advocate for positive outcomes for students. He's been a champion, really, for D-303 in the community, and he's been a good cheerleader for education. Mr. McNally has served on the D-303 board for 12 years. Please let that sink in, 12 years. I did a little back-of-the-envelope math on that. That means he's volunteered more than 1,000 hours in regular board meetings and committee meetings alone. And it's well more than likely, understanding his diligence and hard work, that he's spent another 1,500 hours in preparation of his time, in giving his time, and in event preparation. He's served as the vice president of the board. He's served as a committee chair on each of the board's standing committees, learning and teaching, business services, and policy. He's helped the board navigate through multiple boundary changes, through the challenges brought on by COVID, through two superintendent transitions and multiple labor contracts. He's contributed to at least a score of curriculum adoptions through the course of that time. In all this time, Mr. McNally has worked to represent the community and to faithfully advocate for what he believes is in the best interests of students. He's volunteered his time and his wisdom and his insights throughout that service. So, I think that Mr. McNally and Mr. Lentz are likely to say something like, "My time on the board was a duty and an honor." And that may be true. At the same time, our community and D-303 as a whole owe these board members a real thank you. These are civic-minded volunteers who have given much of themselves. And so, in my role as board president, I say to Mr. McNally and Mr. Lentz, a heartfelt thank you on behalf of D-303. So, please join me in a round of applause for Mr. McNally. I have a, I have a small token of our esteem for the board members, so thank you very much.
Mr. McNally, I just want to say as the superintendent, thank you. Thank you for being a member of the board who helped bring me here. Thank you for all of your service to so many students. Many of our community members know you're an educator as well, on your nine-to-five job or seven-to-seven job on most days. Just thank you. Thank you for what you've contributed to education overall, in multiple districts, and everywhere you've been, you've made a difference. Thank you. Thank you for your service. It's made a difference in the lives of many students and staff and community members. Thank you.
I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I would be remiss if I didn't take a couple of minutes to speak as well. I thought, Mr. Lackner, I think you hit the nail right on the head, so I will not, I will not repeat what you so eloquently said. But, you know, as you mentioned, it's a tough job. It's sometimes thankless, and it's long hours. And, you know, when I was originally appointed to the board, I didn't know anybody. Knew nobody on the board, didn't know very many people within the district. And so, you know, as you spoke to, he had a tremendous amount of experience. And so, whether he liked it or not, I leaned on him quite a bit with long phone calls and discussions. And I just, I found him to be a very caring, thoughtful, intelligent, and certainly a knowledgeable individual. I will certainly miss your wit and your humor. You always timed that quite nicely, even in sometimes tense situations. And very grateful for the time that we've spent together. And it was a great learning experience, meeting and working with you. So, thank you for your tireless effort and your commitment to the students and the help that you gave me too as a very green board member. With respect to Mr. Lentz, I'm sorry that he couldn't be here today. But yeah, I think, Mr. Lackner, you hit the nail right on the head. He jumped right in, immediately started doing the work, you know, jumped into that role on business services and had just a very thoughtful and an intelligent approach, very detail-oriented, cares super deeply about spending the money wisely and the educational outcomes of our students. I spend a lot of time on calls and discussions with him as well. And the district, the administration, and the students will certainly miss him. So, thank you, both of you.
Just wanted to thank you, Ed, for your service to our community as a whole, and also to our school community of D-303. Your expertise related to board and board governance was extremely helpful to me, as I also came on board, and you were already a member of the board. And so, it's just much appreciated. So, thank you. And then, for Mr. Lentz, just to reiterate, he was invaluable to our business services committee. He certainly has a lot of expertise and even education credentials behind him related to school and government accounting, which put a different lens on it than what we had had in the past. And he, he just, it was an invaluable contribution to business services.
Ed, I've known you a long time. And you have been a serious and concerned board member from day one. You had passion and understood the issues and had a voice from community members that not everybody heard from. Your service to our district has been so, I'm so grateful for all the service that you have given to us. And I think Mr. Lackner is very eloquent in what he said, and I totally agree with all he had to say. I do hope your Monday evenings are, I took your joke, I'm sorry. We all consider those. And I have a feeling it's more than 1,000 hours in 12 years. You, from the, when you think of all the things that have happened over a decade, there's been a lot. So, thank you very much for your service, and I wish you the best. And I know that you're looking forward to teaching and just teaching maybe for a while. And in regards to Mr. Lentz, he sat on CAC, if anybody remembers CAC, and really got involved in the buildings and the tours and knowing the, the part of the structures that he felt needed to be addressed. And that showed when he became a board member and took on business services. I think, as with all of you, I have learned a lot and use that in my reflection as a board member and how I see the issues. Even if I don't agree with all the decisions that everyone votes for, I do feel that as a team, we worked really well together. And Mr. Lentz and Mr. McNally were definitely part of that. So, thank you again to both of them.
She stole my joke, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Just, I'm sure your family is happy to have you back on Mondays. And whatever will you do with the next 1,000-plus Monday evenings, thank you for 12 years of service. That's, that's a lot. That, so thank you. That's a, that's a huge thing to give up. I'm sure your family has appreciated the service, but then also, they're gonna be happy to have you back home. Thank you, Mr. Lackner, for all the kind things you said about the two of them. That wraps it up really well. So, much appreciated for 12 years of service. It's a, it's a big thing. It's a really big thing. So, thank you for all you gave. For Mr. Lentz, that was a really great point about CAC. Was a co-chair on CAC with Becky, and his experience, Tom Lentz's experience with the facilities study was very extensive. And he brought a lot to the table with that knowledge when we were working on facilities in the very beginning of his tenure. That was a very valuable tool to have at the table, so it was much appreciated. And of course, I'm sure he's looking forward to having some Mondays to himself. And I'm sure he'll still be volunteering as he cared very passionately for the kids in the community. So, thank you to both of them.
Can I just say one quick thing about Mr. Lentz?
The floor is yours.
Most of it's been, when he and I were serving together on the business services committee, that was probably the easiest job I had because I didn't have to do much. He did it all. And, and I knew it was being done well and better than I was. So, I'd give my two cents and, and he'd take it and run with it. So, I appreciate the time that he was on the board, and he will be missed, I'm certain.
Well, I suppose that brings us to item three on the agenda, which is to seat the new board members. So, tonight, we also have the honor and responsibility of seating a new board. That includes both existing board members, new board members, and returning board members. And part of that process is that we will all swear the same oath to discharge our duty as prescribed by the Illinois School Code, and we have Judge Hall here to help us in that. So, as outgoing board president, I invite the new board members to carry forward in the spirit of service and commitment that has animated this board up to this point. So, Ms. Hancock and Dr. Rich, if you'll please join us at the table, we can do that swearing-in.
Yeah, there we go. There we go. All right. So, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am.
Do solemnly swear
solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully discharge the duties
that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of a member of the school board
of the office of a member of the school board.
of community unit school district 303.
of community unit school district 303.
in accordance with the Constitution of the United States
in accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Illinois
the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
and the laws of the State of Illinois
and the laws of the State of Illinois.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that
I further swear or affirm.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets
I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at the public board meetings.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the school board, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the school board, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for community unit school district 303.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for community unit school district 303.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure that all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision for community unit school district 303.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision for community unit school district 303.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the mission the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations.
Thank you for appearing.
Am I right over here by the flag?
Oh, by the flag.
Here we go.
Yeah, that's a lot of them. Oh, I have some.
Someday it'll be done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Well, thank you for everyone's participation in that. That is a stirring event for me
in my fourth and a half year of board service. The oath always reminds me of what I owe the community. So, thanks for that. That brings us to the more mundane parts of our agenda, which is reports to the board, and we'll start with the superintendent's report.
We're gonna keep the fun happening here. Ms. Dodd, who has been a regular participant with us, she's going to come forward and introduce us to three young people who are amazing young artists, that they've been showcased at the national level. But I will hand it over to you to introduce your friends and to be able to showcase their work.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Stephanie Dodd, and I am the department chair at St. Charles North High School. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today to be able to speak about these fantastic student artists that we have at St. Charles North. So, the award that they have won is the Scholastic Art and Writing Award. It is actually the oldest and most prestigious student art competition that is in the United States. But actually, there are a lot of students that participate globally. It began in 1923, and some notable alumni of the, of the awards are Andy Warhol, Stephen King, and Amanda Gorman. Each year, there are over 300,000 works that are submitted worldwide. And the works that go on to win a national medal are less than 1% of all of the submissions. This means that to win at the national level, these students are recognized as some of the very best in the entire country, although because it is worldwide, I would like to say the entire world as well. This year, we had these three students win this award. We had Simone win a gold medal for digital illustration. We had Gianna win a silver medal for colored pencil drawing. And we had Claire win a silver medal for And we had Claire win a silver medal for photography. It's a tremendous honor. This work stood out not only for their originality, but their personal voice and their technical skill. And actually, at the beginning of June, Simone will be going to New York City for the award ceremony, and they will be recognized at Carnegie Hall. So, one thing about these awards is that they not only boost our students' confidence and their college portfolios, but it also speaks volumes about the strength of our arts program here at D303. It shows that our students not only can create beautiful and compelling work, but that they can compete and win at a national level. So I just want to thank the board, the administration, and the community. I know that this past weekend was the St. Charles Arts Community Street Painting Event. So this recognition would not be possible without everybody's support, and we are very excited to see how these young artists continue to use their artistic voice. I did prep them that you would be willing to ask them questions, so they are ready to answer.
Simone, start us off. Talk to us a little bit about your award-winning work.
So obviously, sorry. So obviously, this is a self-portrait, as you can tell. It's mainly focused around the concept of my personal identity and the way that I want the world to see me. One thing that I like to do in all my art is make it very personal to my identity in various facets, whether it's my physical appearance, my interests, et cetera. So this is a digital illustration done on Photoshop, so the actual image of myself is hand-painted. And the border and the background is a mixture of image collage, which I use to represent different facets of like my history and identity. I have day lilies on there, the orange flowers, which are representative of something that I grew up with a lot as a child. It's related to my mom, my experience, positive experiences I had with her as a kid. Figs, various different plants and animals I also like have personal history with. I could talk about it for hours, but I won't bore you. And then, one of the key parts is my choice of clothing in the actual photo that I referenced of myself. I wanted to show a photo that represented like the good parts of my identity, how passionate I am about just being happy and trying to portray myself like that to the world, as well as my interesting taste in fashion, as you can tell here currently. That's about it, yeah.
Well done. Where are you heading off to next?
I'm going to Myad, Milwaukee, to go into new studio practice and fine art.
And she doesn't want to brag, but she is the first art student that we have that has received a full-ride scholarship based on her portfolio.
Outstanding.
Sorry?
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Who would like to jump into the microphone next?
Hi, my name is Gianna. My junior year of high school, both my lungs collapsed spontaneously, and I was in the hospital for a few weeks my junior year, which was so fun. I had to have surgeries, and that inspired me to make this piece, which is about post-surgical depression and how it can impact a person for months after it all happens. And I wanted to inspire others to talk about how they're feeling, and that it's okay to not be okay sometimes.
Where are you off to next?
I'm going to University of Kansas for industrial design.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Claire?
But she decided to go with Kansas. Oh, sorry. She is happy to go with Kansas.
Rock chalk, baby. Claire, you want to join us?
I wasn't supposed to go on the trip, but last night I decided to go, and it was like one of the very fun experiences of the year. Probably one of the highlights. I remember it was like near an alleyway, which isn't very specific, but I was being rushed, and I didn't really know what to do, because I didn't really know anyone in that year. So I just snapped a picture, and I really liked this one out of the ones I took. It's probably one of my favorites, and I'm hoping to maybe like go into AP Photography soon and try to get a better one next year.
So for those of you that don't know, Claire is a freshman. So to win this award as a freshman is unbelievable and outstanding. She is actually the first freshman that we have had win a national award. We've won national awards for the past six years, but Claire is the youngest student that we have had receive that honor. So yes, of course, we want her to go into AP and continue this artistic journey and see where it takes her. So, thank you.
All three of you, outstanding. Thank you.
Can I just add that these students are amazing, and it's so cool to sit here and celebrate these kiddos who are just doing something that they enjoy, and they've excelled at such an incredibly high level. And what I've seen from you, the many times you have been here celebrating students, is the passion. And having a kiddo who is in a class of yours, I can honestly say without a doubt that you're a really important part of that. So I wanted to say thank you to you as well for providing support and enthusiasm and being their cheerleader. Thank you all so much. It's so awesome to hear all this news. It's amazing.
Right, next up, excited to welcome Erin Mannheim. She brings forward a number of her The North Student Council executive members. So Erin, the microphone is yours to introduce us to why you're here tonight.
We are so excited to introduce you to some of the executive board members from the North Star Council, which is the student council at North. This year, North won the National Gold Council of Excellence for student councils, and that's through the National Association for the Secondary School Principals, through the National Association of Student Councils. So essentially, what that happens is if like everything that you guys do as a school board, or everything the district does, comes together in a huge portfolio. So every time that you have community outreach for something, every time you show fiscal responsibility, every time you offer community voice to come in, or you have people come in and give opinions on your policies for things, every time you plan events for the district, all of that goes into this huge portfolio, and that's literally what they're doing, because they are a student government organization. And then they are scored against other schools. There are only six schools in the State of Illinois that received this award this year, and these guys are it. So we're gonna have you guys introduce themselves and what office they currently hold.
Hi, my name's Anna. I am the student body president at North. And I think honestly, one of my favorite events that we host that I really enjoyed helping with was prom last year. There was a lot that went into it, whether it was advertising, getting even people to bring their own cars for the parade, kind of planning that whole theme, what decorations, all that kind of stuff. I love the actual planning that we can do for the entire student body.
Hi, I'm Vidi. I'm the parliamentarian on student council, and I think my favorite event that we've done is Princess Superhero Breakfast, because I think it's such a fun bonding experience for like all of council and our friends to come dress up as like princesses and superheroes and work with like little kids and just like provide a great experience for them.
Hi, my name is Nora, and I'm currently the second vice president on the student council. And my favorite event would probably have to be window painting, since all the clubs just gotta get together and paint.
Hi, my name is Gabriella, and I'm currently historian. My favorite event that we do is also breakfast superhero, just because it's fun to play with kids and also fundraise.
My name is Rhea. I'm currently freshman class president. And then my favorite event that we've done is also Princess Superhero Breakfast. But also something we did that's kind of unique this year is we did an AI-like task force thing, and we just like told teachers about like how like AI is actually a useful tool to change your mindset about AI at school.
Hi, I'm Katie Dixon. I'm one of the other advisors. And my favorite thing from this year is seeing Gabriella, she's one of my sophomores, really take leadership in documenting everything for not only the National Council of Excellence, but also we have to do the honor book, which is presented at the Student Council State Convention, which was held like a week and a half ago. And she just put in so much work. She had her own little like subcommittee that was supporting her, but I've never seen a student work harder on this. And I mean, I think she's the best historian we've ever had, so she's pretty great.
I believe we have only one senior here tonight? Yes, but I... Yes. How about you tell us where you're heading off to? Congratulations on that as well. Thank you all for your leadership, your contribution to making North High School even that much better. Thank you, thank you for coming out and being recognized by the board.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Because we're having so much fun, I would like to have us start our video for the, our general celebration within D303. Mr. Lekker, I'm gonna hand it back over to you.
Well, I always appreciate, Dr. Gordon, that you have the most fun in the superintendent's report. So let's move to item 4B, Board Member Reports on Committee, and let's start with Learning and Teaching.
Okay, yeah, I concur. That's always a tough act to follow. Maybe we should put my voice to music to make it a little bit more bearable. So yeah, with Learning and Teaching met back on April 21st at 5:30, we had, I think, maybe the longest meeting we've ever had in the history of learning and teaching, aside from maybe a couple of student achievement reports. So I will spare you the detailed breakdown of it, but I do highly recommend that folks in the community, if interested, go back. There's an 82 slide deck, I believe. We covered a number of very important initiatives that the team is currently working on, and it's important to note that there, those are all interconnected with one another for that high school experience. So that was the major topic that we discussed. Again, it's a very robust and deep conversation. We went over cases for change, success criteria. There was a lot of good discussion and conversation around the board table. We got to see a number of different faces at the board table of the individuals that are owning and leading the work, which was, for this board member, very refreshing. I always appreciate seeing the folks with the proverbial boots on the ground. We also went into detail about changes to the Academic Program Guide, discussion on what the current state of that is, and an ideal future state, and all of the work that is going on for that online resource. As you can see, I have about a dozen pages of notes, so I will just leaf through them. We then discussed various endorsement pathways for the college and career pathway process. We discussed a number of those. Again, robust and enlightening conversation with some timelines looking ahead for some of those endorsements that we're working on. I think then lastly, unless I'm missing something, Mrs. McCabe, we discussed School Links as well as a part of the high school experience. My understanding is it is, by all accounts, was a far superior resource than what we have been using historically, has a number of tools and resources for both families, students, and counselors alike, so that is very exciting. We also discussed a couple of resource recommendations and curriculum updates, which I believe are for action this evening in addition to the School Links resource. Mrs. McCabe, did I miss anything from that marathon of a meeting? Okay, that's that.
Well, we're gonna skip over the Business Services Committee report, since both of our Business Service Committee chairs are absent today. And that brings us to DPTO. Mrs. Bell, before we go to that, I just would like to say there are a couple of action items. If people are interested, the replay of the Business Services Committee is available online for folks to take a look at. There are a couple of items here. Mrs. Bell, the floor is yours for DPTO.
One of the quick things we talked about at DPTO, which was April 16th, was the family district-wide fun run, and I have a little flyer in front of me that they made as a draft. So it's, I wouldn't say this was official by any means. The event is official. It's gonna happen at some point during Scarecrow Festival, and it's a really neat opportunity for the entire community to come together. And of course, all the visitors that come in for this Scarecrow Fest believe it's gonna be held at Thompson. Not quite sure on timing, but it's a really neat event, in my opinion. It's something that the DPTO had talked about maybe doing in the late fall, early winter. I remember here the first idea of it. And more details will come, but it's just, it's, as of this past month, it was, been solidified as happening. I've mentioned it a couple of times, I think. One of the funny things that I think they're gonna do is that they're gonna do mascot races for all of the schools, which I think would be so fun. So it's a very family-oriented, fun event that I think would be really great, is they pull the community together. The other thing that was talked about is they may or may not have, may or may not have a May meeting, so I don't have necessarily that for sure to tell you. Possibly. I haven't heard back, so I don't know for sure. In addition, they talked about possible changes for upcoming leadership. However, I don't know that that discussion was finished, so I may have, whoever the next chair of that is, will have a further update on that. And I think the last thing to note was that if there is a leadership change, just wanted to make sure it was said publicly how grateful DPTO was for Andy, Andy Romano's service for so many years, just because she does have a graduating senior. I'm not sure how that will all play out, because that's not, that's not, DPTO is not, for all listeners, DPTO is not necessarily a board committee. It's something that I am there as a person to watch. So that's their decision, how that goes forward. But I just want to make sure that it's heard that a lot of her work goes unsung, because it's a big volunteer position, and it's very much appreciated. So I wanted to make sure, at the very least, thank you to Andy Romano for all the work she has done up until today. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. That brings us to item five, Citizen Comments. We do have citizens' comments. Mr. Kuescher, would you read our preamble?
During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and the community in which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on a topic of their choosing. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility towards others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special, and committee meetings are live-streamed and available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. Personal information should be considered before making a statement that will be recorded and made public. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during this meeting, we are committed to listening to you to help support our work for the district on behalf of our students, staff, families, and community members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kuescher. Our first speaker is Kathy Travis.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kathy Travis, and I am the K-8 Food Service District Manager here at St. Charles School District. On behalf of Organic Life, I would like to take this opportunity to express our heartfelt gratitude for being a part of such an incredible district. Serving District 303 has been an absolute privilege, and we are deeply thankful to be among a community with a superintendent, a COO, and school board, and parents who are so deeply invested in the well-being and success of children. On behalf of the entire Organic Life team, I just want to say thank you very much for all your help and support, and have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our next speaker, Beth Lucas.
Hi, Beth Lukak, part of the St. Charles Community
Hi, Beth Lukak, part of the St. Charles community, and I'm here regarding bus service discontinuation to and from Norton Creek Elementary starting next school year. I attended and provided comments actually on the same topic at the April 28 Business Services Committee meeting, and all of those comments still stand. I'm here today regarding an update to what's transpired since then. Impacted families, including mine, have received a one-year courtesy bus service extension email offer linked to an agreement that I would need to sign by the end of the month. However, while appreciative, I have still not received resolution to the matters raised at the last month's meeting. Additionally, I had requested over email transparency into the proof showing the calculation that is deeming my home ineligible for bus service, as I'm not convinced that my home is under the 1.5-mile bus service boundary. I had the opportunity to walk the route with the pedometer and have calculated it's well over the boundary, not even door-to-door and using the straightest route. Again, I'm seeking information as to how my home is ineligible. Here today to again ask the board to step into this matter, I would appreciate transparency into the calculations impacting my home, and regardless, would ask that logical principles be applied to the decisions made in this matter. Grandfathering bus service to entire subdivisions instead of only servicing a portion of them. Review, ongoing review of safety issues for increasing traffic on Foxfield Road coupled with lack of crosswalks available for elementary-aged children, and consideration of the increased congestion created for school drop-off and pickup times as a result of the current discontinuation applied. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us our next speaker, Diana Summies.
Hello, my name is Diana Summacy, and I am from the Kingswood subdivision in St. Charles. I am here to speak about the ineligibility of bus service from my house to Norton Creek Elementary. I echo neighbors' comments and share all the same concerns as our family received the same notification for discontinuing bus service. It is my understanding that our subdivision has received bus service for coming on 22 years since Norton Creek opened in 2003. I also had an opportunity to walk the route with insufficient crosswalk and traffic on Foxfield. My route was well over 1.5... the over... excuse me. The route was also well over the 1.5 eligibility criteria. I asked the board to step in and provide transparency on how my home falls short of the 1.5-mile boundary. I have requested this information and have not received... have not received it, and instead, I have received the courtesy of a one-year extension. We feel pressured to sign without adequate information. Regardless, we are asking for the subdivision to be grandfathered into the bus service, which may include exploring other options for impacted families to walk to different bus stops within the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our next speaker, Stephen Szilinski.
Hello. Yes, Stephen Szilinski, St. Charles Charlemagne subdivision. Hello, everyone, again. I was here last meeting to voice our concerns with the bus route change over the Charlemagne and Kingwood subdivision. Like they've stated, we've been receiving that service for many years. We've found it very concerning that this letter was sent out, and we believe that we're well within the 1.5 miles. We have received the letter stating that service would be continued for one additional year, but we are feeling pressure to sign this stating that we would understand that it's being discontinued after. We'd like to note that this option does not answer many of the questions we've had. We've requested for grandfathering provisions, disclosure of extended mileage calculation, which has been requested by multiple families and not submitted. We do not believe this data is correct and needs to be verified by maybe a third party or outsourcing somewhere else with the program maybe not being adequate to meet the needs. We've also asked that we review Foxfield Road, the subdivision. We consider this a hazardous route. IDOT may have to come out and reevaluate. We're asking that the board reach out to other members in the committee to help us with IDOT to get this road validated as a hazard. By doing so, this can also provide you guys additional funding to help cover our students and get busing services. I don't believe that's been started. If it has, additional communication to the families would be helpful. We don't feel comfortable signing anything at this time, because none of our questions really have been answered. So until we get further communication, I believe all families are holding at this moment. We just hope that everyone takes these concerns seriously and helps us as a community. We're all willing to step in. We're all willing to fill out... I believe there's an IDOT questionnaire form that people can in the community fill out to voice their concerns to IDOT to help maybe push this through. I don't know if people realize there has been an additional subdivision opened with additional cross-traffic. I myself have tried walking it. Cars do not stop. So if we're expecting young children to try to cross a street, I trust the children. I don't trust the people driving the vehicles. They're just blowing through. This past weekend, being Mother's Day weekend, traffic was exceptionally busy. I've seen everything from the high schoolers blowing through there really quick, and the people with the really nice fancy Corvettes flying through there. So again, we think this road is considered a hazard, so whether we're within the 1.5, we really need to look at this as being a hazardous route versus how close are you to the school? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That brings us to item 6, the Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6A through 6CC?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kuescher and Ms. McCabe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Abstain.
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries with six yays and one abstention. That brings us to item 7 on the agenda, the four action items. The first one is School Links. Can I have a motion to approve the three-year contract with School Links?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Kuescher and Ms. McCabe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. That brings us to item B, Algebra 1 and Algebra 1 Honors Resource Recommendations. Can I have a motion to approve the Algebra 1 and Algebra 1 Honors Resource Recommendations?
So moved.
Second that.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe and Mr. Kuescher. Is there any discussion? I'm going to offer one comment, hearing no other discussion, that I'm really excited that we've moved forward with such a deep dive into high school math and thought about that all the way from 12 down to K, and so I'm excited to vote for this. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. That brings us to item C, Biology and Honors Biology Resource Recommendations. Can I have a motion to approve Biology and Honors Biology Resource Recommendations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe and Mrs. Bell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. Can I have a motion to approve the High School English and English Honors Resource Recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. McCabe and Mrs. Bell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. Can I have a motion to approve the Honors Social Studies Resource Recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe and Mrs. Bell. Is there any discussion?
I'll just say one thing, that it's really great to be looking at all of these various resources, and they're not just one standard. It's one standard and honors in each and every one of them, so that's pretty awesome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. That brings us to item F. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution for the designation of depositories?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe and Mrs. Bell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuescher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Abstain. The motion carries five yays and two abstentions. That brings us to item 8 on the agenda. There are four items for information. There's the D-303 financial report, the Mid Valley Financial Report, Freedom of Information Act requests, and District Enrollment Report included in your packet. That brings us to item 9 on the agenda, new business. Do any board members have any new business they'd like to bring forward now?
Well, I was just going to comment a little bit further. We've heard a couple of comments at recent board meetings from the community regarding the school bus situation. I don't know if this is an opportunity for us to just give a heads-up of the work that's going on, or would that be a better fit at a future meeting? I know that there is some things that are happening behind the scenes and that perhaps the public would be... like to be privy to, but I guess I'll state that this is something that we... at least, I'll speak for myself, since I can't speak for everybody else, but something we take very seriously, and we're hearing the community loud and clear with this, so we're hoping to come to a resolution. Again, Dr. Gordon, I'm not sure if...
Yeah, we're definitely working behind the scenes. We will definitely be reaching out to families in short order, but we are doing a little bit of work behind, working to understand it deeply, where we are, what's occurring with each of the homes within that. We have made some different decisions about what... where are those new lines, and recognizing that members in that Norton Creek subdivisions have had services for many years, and what does that look like going forward? So we are working on that, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak to that, and we will be communicating shortly. So thank you.
Hearing no other new business. That brings us to item 10, End of Meeting Citizen Comments. Doesn't look like we have end of meeting.
Oh, you did?
Oh, you did. Fantastic. Mr. Kuescher, I wonder if you might read the preamble for our citizen comments?
I sure will. During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and the community in which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on a topic of their choosing. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility towards others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special, and committee meetings are live-streamed and available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. Personal information should be considered before making a statement that will be recorded and made public. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during this meeting, we are committed to listening to you to help support our work for the district and on behalf of our students, staff, families, and community members. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Ms. McCann Maholsky.
Hi, thank you. I'm Terri McCann Maholsky, and I am a resident of St. Charles with two students in the district. And this is a similar comment to the one that I made at the last meeting. Myself and a number of other parents had sent a letter on March 10th regarding special education services within the district and concerns that we had. And we have still not received any communication about our concerns, and we are looking for a response. Policy within the district states that when such a letter is sent, that information is relayed to the board, and then it should be communicated at the next board meeting. This is now the second board meeting that has occurred since that letter has been received by the board. We are hoping to have some resolution and have these concerns addressed. We have not had any movement on this, and we would really like some communication and some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That brings us to item 11, Motion to Adjourn Sin Die. Can I have a motion to adjourn sin die?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell and Mr. Kuescher. Ms. Marsan, is there any conversation? Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion passes 7-0. Can I have a motion to appoint Tammy Marsan as President and Secretary Pro Ten?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kuesher and Ms. McCabe. Ms. Marsan, can you please take the roll?
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesher?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0.
Okay, at this time, we will start with the election of the board president. First, I'm going to ask for nominations for board president. So are there any nominations for board president?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Heidi Fairgreen for board president.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lackner nominated Mrs. Fairgreen. Are there any other nominations for board president? Okay, just want to ask one more time. Are there any other nominations for board president? Okay, the nominations for board president are now closed, and the nominee is Mrs. Fairgreen. I will now take a roll call vote. So when I call your name, please state your choice for board president. And I'm going to start at the beginning. Mrs. Bell?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Mrs. Hancock?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Mr. Kuesher?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Mrs. McCabe?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Mrs. Rich?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Mr. Lackner?
Heidi Fairgreen.
Congratulations to Mrs. Fairgreen.
Okay, thank you very much to all of my board colleagues here for your support. I do sincerely appreciate it. With that, are there nominations for board vice president? I would like to nominate Joe Lackner for vice president. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The nominations for board vice president are now closed. The nominee is Joe Lackner. Ms. Marsan, would you please take a roll call vote for the office of vice president? And when Ms. Marsan calls your name, please state your choice for board president. Vice president. Thank you.
Mrs. Hancock?
Mr. Lackner.
Mr. Kuesher?
Joe Lackner.
Mr. Lackner?
Mr. Lackner.
Mrs. McCabe?
Mr. Lackner.
Mrs. Rich?
Joe Lackner.
Mrs. Bell?
Joe Lackner.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Joe Lackner.
Joe Lackner. Congratulations, Mr. Lackner. You now will assume the role of Board Vice President. And now, moving to Board Secretary, are there nominations for Board Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Becky McCabe.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Becky McCabe, are there any other nominations? And then finally, are there any other nominations? The nominations for Board Secretary are now closed. The nominee is Mrs. Becky McCabe. Ms. Marsan, would you please take a roll call vote for the office of Board Secretary? When Ms. Marsan calls your name, please state your choice for Board Secretary.
Mr. Kusher?
Becky McCabe.
Mr. Lackner?
Mrs. McCabe.
Mrs. McCabe?
Becky McCabe.
Mrs. Rich?
Becky McCabe.
Mrs. Bell?
Becky McCabe.
Mrs. Hancock?
Becky McCabe.
Mrs. Fairgreath?
Becky McCabe. Congratulations to Becky McCabe, and she will now assume the role of Board Secretary. With that, we'll move on to, we do have an item that's for action, 14A, the setting of the 2025-2026 school board meeting calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 school board meeting calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kusher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lackner. Any discussion at this time? Okay, Ms. Marsan, would you please take the role?
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kusher?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreath?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the May 12, 2025 school board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe and Mr. Lackner for the second.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Kusher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreath?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. The meeting is adjourned at 7:08 PM. Thank you.